Ms. Barnett.
Ms. Roberts.
Present.
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 Thank you, Ms. Barnett. Moving on to public recognition, Mr. Trahan. I'm sorry, I'm ready to go. Sorry, I'm out of order. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Forgive me, I'm coming back, can you?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in the heavens with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to public recognition, Mr. Trahan.
Even President Roberts, members of the board, good evening. We have a couple of recognitions that we want to make sure to highlight tonight. We have a teacher from Jefferson School who was named the art teacher of St. Louis Post-Dispatch for September. She was highlighted in the Post-Dispatch and we pushed that out through the website as well. And Teresa Hopkins, in addition to being recognized by the Post-Dispatch, she received a $250 gift card courtesy of Elko Chevrolet Cadillac. So we appreciate her to give to she. We had a dig at that September 29th, that was in the clock of our school. More than 75 people attended the ribbon cutting ceremony for the Believe Project Literacy Lab. The lab is an initiative of the St. Louis Black Authors of Children's Literature Association, which is dedicated to improving reading proficiency in elementary students. Entertainment is provided by students.
Hi, my name is Faith Petty. I'm in Barack Obama Elementary School and I'm in sixth grade.
Oh, my name is Jonathan Petty. I go to Barack Obama Elementary School and I'm in fourth grade.
Hey, my name is Kenneth Petty. I go to Barack Obama Elementary School and I'm in seventh grade.
Life may be tough. Things will get rough. There will be bad days. It all may seem like a haze. But through it all, always, always stand tall. Giving up is not an option. Never turn your back and run. Through good times and bad, happy times and sad, as long as you keep moving, you'll never stop growing. Everyone is special. Nobody is better than. I know I can do it if I believe I can.
Before the, before the thing, can we have a few words with them? Some of us were in attendance to see their performance.
Please, please.
I just want to thank you so much for being here tonight. My name is Harden Hyde. I'm one of the board members here in the school district. I want you all to know that we couldn't have started out the installation of this Believe project with a more perfect message than the one that you all gave us. There will be people who doubt you and there will be people who will tell you you can't. But you all helped us understand the importance of working hard and believing in yourself. And, and we just appreciate your voices and the message that you gave to us. Thank you to your parents for preparing you and then showing the best that we have to offer at Barack Obama. So this was a wonderful presentation. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Any other board members? I'd just like to say, I wasn't able to attend, but I've heard about it, I've seen it. And I just want to let you know that you inspired me as much as I tried to inspire you. So continue to shine your light. Thank you. Okay. So we'll pause for a second to get a, do we want to go now?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I want to get Mr. Anthony's here.
Okay. Mr. Anthony.
That's great.
Please.
Mr. Julius Anthony.
And while, while they organize, Mr. Anthony is a class of, you're an alumnus of Normandy, right? Oh, you're not? Oh, we just claim you. We just claim you. Just claim a number, pick a number.
I saw my eyes get really big, so I was gonna say what?
Pick a number.
Right, St. Louis Public School system.
Okay.
Right, right. HU as well. Valerie Bell was here this evening. She's alum of HU as well.
Okay.
Well, first let me say thank you. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. We're simply thrilled. And I'm here on behalf of myself and the Board of Directors for St. Louis Black Authors of Children's Literature. When we received the honor from Nike, it was really important for us to be at Normandy Schools Collaborative because Craig Williams, who's the president of the Jordan Brand, is an alumnus of Normandy School District. And so it wasn't a question but to be anywhere but here. And our time with you has been just thrilling. Dr. Taylor was the right person to be with, the right school to be at, and all of the staff there has been just great for us. But here's the real deal. The real deal is about making sure that black children have opportunities to be successful readers and to give them a chance to see themselves. And everything that they do in the classroom is to make sure that literacy is the real key and pathway to learning. And so I just want to say thank you for letting us be here. But here's the real quote that I take from that experience. And it was actually given by the gentleman over here, Faith. We had a chance to appear on Fox Two, what is it? The Pulse of St. Louis, Dr. Taylor and I. And they interviewed the children that was just before you, and Faith gave the best quote. They asked her, what does the Believe project mean to you and what does that space mean to you? And she said, "The Believe space make black girls pop." It doesn't get any better than that. It doesn't get any better than that. So I'm going to incorporate that in every speech I have from now on. Believe space make black girls pop. But I believe it makes all children, especially black children, pop. And that's what we want. We want them to see themselves in that space. We want them to feel safe in that space. But most importantly, we want it to be a pathway toward reading because reading is the basis for all learning in school. We have a gift for you, to the board and Dr. Ryder. This was the marquee for the Believe space for that day. And so we want to present this to the board this evening to you as well.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And I feel like I'm among friends because I have mentors sitting up here. Dr. Petty, Howard, man, Tony, Bill.
No, we're just taking a picture.
They make me pop.
Well, we definitely appreciate your commitment to this district and we ask that you continue your great work. And we're such, we're very honored and appreciate, appreciative of that. Alright, so, okay, yeah, we can get the board members.
These hairs are.
With that, so we move on to Dr. Simmons. I want to pay a motion for Dr. Simmons. All the favor I, I approach saying pregnant. So, so we move on to item number four, Board Operations Updates. Sorry, we'll move on to, the agenda has been adopted. We'll move on to item number four, Board Operations, and we'll begin with updates from the municipal partnership. Mayor McGee, thank you.
Impressive. You know, when our young people do bad, it's all over the place. When they do good, nobody recognizes them. So I was just so proud to see those young people come up and I saw that view. That was really impressive. That young lady and those young people did an excellent job. First of all, I want to thank the board president and thank this board and thank all of the members that are here. We thank you for having us out to give a brief update of the 24 One Municipal Partnership. My name is Mayor James McGee. I'm the mayor of the city of Anita Park and I'm also the chairperson of the 24 One Municipal Partnership. Just several updates. The progress continues to be made on creating a transportation development district in the 24 One footprint that will raise more dollars for streets, curbs, and sidewalk repair. If you look around sometime, there's no sidewalks for our young people to, to walk on. They have to walk out in the streets. And if you know lately, they've been hitting young people, hitting old people, the drivers just don't care anymore. And they're killing all of our young people that are walking on the sidewalk, walking on the street. So we decided to do something about that. Today, 15 municipalities have either expressed interest or participating or have passed resolution to move forward in creating and repairing streets, curbs, sidewalks that will greatly enhance the character of our community. The 24 One Municipal Partnership has been approached by State Representative Kevin Wender and the Legal Service of Eastern Missouri to support the creation of a land bank in the county. This land bank will streamline the process to move vacant and abandoned properties to interest developers and make it more financially feasible. The 24 One Municipal Partnership supports the concept as a way of to remove the eyesores of vacant homes and has asked for more detail as they become available. You know, we have a lot of vacant properties and that can create crime. So with this land bank, developers come in and buy that, buy that property after everything been cleared off, they tax it and all of that. They can bid on that clear property with a clear title. And that way we can remodel those homes or tear them down. And that way we won't be the eyesore in our community. Last night, we hosted a meet and greet with the US Senator Candidate, Ms. Trudy Bush Valentine at Beyond Housing. The candidate gave us position on several topics and took questions from the group. Dr. Petty asked a very good question to her position on public education. And Ms. Bush Valentine heard from the entire room about the importance of the success of the Normandy School Collaborative. We continue to be very impressed with Dr. Petty's knowledge, candor, and authoriveness in working with the 24 One Municipal Partnership. It is clear he's both a subject matter expert on education and clearly has shown his understanding of the importance of community partnership. Many of us continue to hear from parents about concern that continue to exist at the district. These concerns give us great pause. We would like to recommend that Dr. Petty play a larger role in the day-to-day operation of the district to right the ship and help the children be more successful. Without encouraging overreach in his current position as a board member, we would be highly supportive of any new or more direct role he could play. We would like the board to explore this potential option as quickly as possible and arrive at a solution by the next board meeting. We had a meeting today and thanked the security director, Mr. Campbell. You know, when you start getting older, you forget names. But it was a successful meeting. We looking to find help for our young people. You know, our young people are carrying guns now and they stealing cars. So we trying to find a solution. So we holding everybody accountable. And with that meeting today, it really was successful. I can stay, we had another meeting dealing with getting legislation. So we can take that to Jeff City. So we're in contact that the prosecuting attorney's office, he gonna work with us. We're holding our local resident accountable, the elected officials accountable, we holding our state reps accountable. US senators, we holding them accountable. And we also holding everybody in the school district accountable. Because we have to look at accountability. And we just thank you all for working with the 24 One Municipal Partnership and getting back together again as a hand in a glove. Thank you once again.
Thank you, Mayor McGee. You surely give us a lot to think about and we appreciate the partnership with you all as well. Any comments or questions from the board members?
We have a plan that we work on. We're sharing with you all probably at the next meeting. We want to have a meeting with you and Dr. Petty first.
Okay. Just one, one last thing. In the spirit of, this is homecoming week. Anything we should be paying particular attention to or anything that's going on that we should, you want to share in terms of activities as it relates to homecoming?
Well, we have the North County Police Cooperative. They'll be out in full force. We want everybody to be safe and secure.
Okay.
We're not taking any chances. So everything will be covered. We want to make sure that they can come out and have a good time. We know there's fight, but we're gonna start just before, just to let you all know. We're gonna have a conference with the parents if their children get in trouble and we're gonna warn them. And it's gonna be on the North County Police Cooperative head level, sending information to the parents about what gonna happen with, with their children in there.
What's the recourse if?
The recourse, the first one would be a conflict resolution. We sit down and talk to them and they will get a warning. The second one, we will get, they will get a citation. The parents will. Because we're gonna hold the parents accountable for their children's action. And the third one, they'll go to jail and have to post bond. So it'll be on the, the North County Police Cooperative head. We contacted the, the public prosecuting attorney's office and he on board with us. So we have to do something. And with that, we had the same situation in Anita Park where there's gangs was going on, graffiti sites. And when we put that parental neglect ordinance in place, everything stopped. So we start holding the parents accountable. Graffiti stopped, fights stopped, the gang activity stopped. But we had one parent didn't believe it. So when she went to jail, she got out and snapped her son upside the head and sent him to stay with her father because she said she wasn't going to jail for him. And believe me, that would get their attention. So we have to do something. So that's, that's what we're working on.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you so much. Any other question? Thank you all so much for doing a fantastic job. This is a breath of first air just to see our school moving to the next level. And we, by the way, just one more comment. We was at the community event at Umsul. And the president of Amarin UE graduated from Normandy. So that was a big success right there. So we contacted him and finding out how he can assist Normandy. Because he had a resource. So we reaching out to him also.
Thank you, thank you. And just a follow-on to that, we have a very distinguished alumni group that are waiting to participate. So we as a board, we as an administration, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll do a better job of engaging them because they're standing ready to distribute some of their black pride. I don't want to seem like I'm out of order, but as a follow-on, when you talked about security, that is priority number one amongst the other things. And we have our Director of Safety and Security here. Norm, do you have anything, also in the spirit of homecoming and making sure that we're safe and sound, but throughout that, do you have anything you want to add as far as protocols, as far as safety, uh, security goes?
Yes, sir. Thank you so very much, Board President, members of the board, superintendent. Yeah, Mayor McGee spoke properly. We have been working collaborative, collaborative to, ah, can't even say it, collaboratively, together. Coming up with a plan of action to make sure that not only are our students safe, but everybody that's participating will be safe and, and feel secure during this time. We have a whole plan of action that we will get out to the superintendent and make sure that she's okay with it and the board president, make sure you guys are well aware of what we're trying to accomplish. Everything seems to be in place. I've been working with Coach Ham, making sure that all of our cars and everybody that wants to participate in the, in the parade knows what to do, how to do it, and keep each other safe. So, yes, sir. We, and, and I just want to add too that that meeting today was very productive. We met with the, with the family court of St. Louis County and they had a lot of good suggestions to add. So I hadn't had a chance to talk to Dr. Ryder about it yet, but they had a lot of good suggestions that, that I really want to take advantage of, so.
And just lastly, you know, I know that you've been enhancing safety and security protocols at the high school. Any high-level updates as it relates to that?
We, we, I also met when I met with, when I left that meeting with the North County Co-op, I met with our, our camera people. So we're gonna add new cameras and, and make sure that all of our cameras are up to date and, and, and working order. We're gonna add some new ones that, that are in blind spots to make sure that every nook and cranny is safe and, and able to be seen and visible to our security staff and to our administrative staff, so.
Thank you.
Alright, North County Co-op also has added off-duty police officers to our, our daily security. So we have at least two extra security officers on, on the campus on a daily basis that has been patrolling the, the campus and also inside the schools, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
One other thing with the security, we in the process of purchasing another drone. So the drone can be up and in, and catch anything that's going on before it happens.
Not sure the public heard it through there. Can you repeat that? Mayor McGee, just make sure that the audience.
Thank you, guys.
The North County Co-op is also in the process of purchasing a drone and we also getting Flock's cameras. That way the drone can be in the air and see everything with the camera that we can't see. So that's another safety feature we're looking at.
Alright, thank you, Mayor McGee. Alright, with that, moving on to item number five, Interim Superintendent Update. Dr. Ryder.
Thank you and thank you for the update, Mayor McGee and Mr. Campbell. I look forward to our conversation tomorrow about what, what you learned today. We all know that safety and security has been at the top of our priority list. Especially the last few weeks as we have been featured on news stations, et cetera, concerning some of the events that have occurred. I wanted to move into a little bit of a different direction tonight though and talk about some of the positive things that are happening in our high school. Someone said earlier that it wasn't often that we heard about the positive that is happening. So I felt it important to, to share that, first of all, we have amazing kids at the high school. I've been in the high school a lot in recent, in the recent couple of weeks and have interacted with the students personally and our kids are truly amazing. Our staff is talented and extremely dedicated to what they are doing at the high school and want to see positive change and want to be a part of that change. The last two away games for football back-to-back, the football team and coaches were given compliments from the referees that refed during those games. Again, not something we always hear about. So I wanted to make sure that all in the audience and those of you tuning in via Zoom could hear some of the positive that is occurring at our high school. As Norm shared earlier, we do have increased security at the high school. We now have ID badges in place. And if students show up without their badges or are not wearing their badges, parents will be getting a phone call and either have to bring the badge to school or the child will be sent home. It's just that important that we make sure that our students have their ID badge every single day. Uniforms have been distributed. And I also want to recognize that we still have work to do and we're committed to that. Part of what we have been working on recently is the planning for homecoming. So I'm gonna shift into homecoming a bit at this time. Board members in front of you, you have a little gift bag and that gift bag is a, an agenda of all that is occurring this week during homecoming, including Spirit Week, the prep, pep rally that's taking place on Thursday, the details for the parade and game details and the homecoming dance information. So you can see that and also in your little bag, and I'm gonna try to share this on Zoom too a little bit. This weekend, if you come to homecoming, all of these amazing little items in this bag are gonna be available to our participants that come to the game. So you will have little pom-pom shakers, Tudor fart ones, little noise makers. We're really trying to build the spirit for our game and just fun little football. Little noise makers. We're really trying to build the spirit for our game and just fun little football bracelets. And there's actually even chocolates and a lollipop in the shape of a football. So we're hoping to, um, increase our spirit at our game this weekend and hope that everyone comes out and has a great time and helps to celebrate our students. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, any, all right, any questions? Interim superintendent's update? No? Okay. All right. Hearing none, we'll proceed with the, um, with, uh, let's see, we're moving on to items for, uh, items, uh, six and seven, with items for consent and approval for consent. Um, we've all had a chance to review the items for consent, uh, with that out and a motion to approve and then we'll move on with the question. We've got a move, uh, motion in a second. Um, any discussion regarding the items for consent? Okay, hearing none. Uh, all in favor, aye. Opposed, same privilege. The ayes have it. All right. Moving on to item number eight, items for action, career lot ladder plan approval. Make sure your mic is on.
Good evening. Good to see you.
Likewise. Um, thank you for your time this evening and I will present, be presenting. Dr. McConnell had a prior engagement. So there is an exciting new program that the state is bringing back that used to be in play. And the career ladder, basically the purpose of it, um, is to keep educators engaged in what they do and to also give them opportunities to grow and to become administrators. And the real benefit is the state helps pay for some of that. And I'm gonna get into a little bit more of the specifics in this brief presentation and answer any questions you may have. So, um, what exactly is career ladder? It's, it's the advancement program for teachers. It provides extra compensation for additional duties. And so what this would look like is a teacher could stay after school and mentor a student for five hours and they mark that down. Maybe they're gonna help put on a drama play where they're helping kids practice their reading and they're gonna mark that down. There's lots of different duties that would qualify for hours. And as they gain these hours, they basically will earn a stipend at the end of the year if they choose to participate. And so to help cover the costs and that way Normandy is not just paying for teachers to work with students and do tutoring, things that do help students. Um, the state covers sixty percent of the E P E D that we pay out to the teachers. So here's how it works with eligible teachers and we have created a plan and I'm gonna talk a little bit about how we, um, created and submitted the plan. But in order to be eligible for this grant, there are basically three stages that the teachers can be in. Stage one is for teachers who are in their second year. Stage two is for teachers who are in their third and fourth year. Then stage three is five plus years and you see how much money they will get paid out. Also, you see the required number of volunteer hours. I'm putting volunteer with my quotes out. So if a teacher, you know, tutors for three hours, they mark it down. If they do something else, they mark it down. It has to be turned in. It has to be approved because we want to see that they're actually doing stuff to benefit the kids. Um, and the other thing is the minimum number of responsibilities. So that's also meaning like you can't just do like one big activity and say, oh, I covered my fifty hours because I did, you know, the weekend back to school bash and now I'm done for the year. Now you owe me fifteen hundred dollars. So it's kind of a way to ensure that teachers are doing stuff to benefit the kids and not just doing things to maybe grow their own careers. Or we're looking at both. Specifically for our plan, we felt it was important that teachers have worked in Normandy for at least one year before they could be eligible for the grant. That way they're comfortable with Normandy. They're not just new to, um, teaching, but that they feel good about the community and they're able to kind of go the next mile. The other thing is that they've had to have adequate evaluations in previous years. So this is only eligible to teachers who have been determined distinguished or, um, better by the principal. So we actually look at the previous year evaluation to make sure they are eligible. And that's part of the grant for the state that stipulates that. It's also part of the plan that we put. So in order to implement this program, we're actually, um, we took some time. We got a committee together when we found out this grant was back. Um, we had a teacher, a parent, Miss, the fabulous Miss Sheila Williams volunteered her time and was a member of our committee as well as a curriculum expert. And then me as an H R representative and we worked together to put this plan in place. We're submitting it to you and we also submitted it to Desi for approval. And then pending your approval, we'll actually start sharing it out with the schools and start getting teachers signed up. Um, and obviously the sooner that we can get teachers on board, the better. So a big part is also assessing if this program was successful or not. So if this program's approved and we get teachers to participate, we'll actually present back out to the school board in May. And again, that's when we also seek reimbursement for the state for the E P E D and it all goes out. And so we'll be presenting the total number of teachers participating at each stage. It's completely voluntary. Um, also basically like the number of hours. That way you guys can see, oh, like, did we pay back a teacher for coaching something that we didn't usually pay for? Did we pay this teacher for mentoring other teachers or for starting an A C T class? We want to be very transparent, make sure the board sees. Also something that, um, was discussed and I know, um, i- is a big part is also looking at the effectiveness. So we've talked about how to measure the success of the program, not just in numbers, but actual academic outcomes. So it wasn't part of our state application, but it's something that the committee is worried about and was brought up. Like, we don't want teachers just to be collecting paychecks. We want kids to be learning and we want teachers to be growing professionally. And so we talked about what metrics we can use to, you know, whether it's a pre-test or what, but how can we try to show that we're effective? Not just by what people did, but actually by student outcomes. Um, and then the other thing is we show, and this is hopefully that teachers are, um, because they're getting extra compensation, we hope that this affects their retention rates and they're less likely to leave because they know, oh, if I, you know, volunteer for a hundred hours, I can make an extra five thousand dollars, which is, which is quite a bit, um, for staff. So the bottom line, um, of career ladder in this grant is that this helps students get the extra support they need academically. It's really the biggest push of why this grant can help us. Teachers get extra pay that's supplemented by Desi. That way it's not just Normandy, um, paying it, but it's actually the, the state passes grant specifically for this program. And then lastly, teachers get an opportunity to gain new skills that will positively impact their career and help them on their trajectory. Um, at this time, I am happy and I know, uh, other people have been on the committee. We're happy to answer any questions and anything I can't answer, I'm happy to take notes down and get back to you. So is there any questions at this time?
Yeah, this.
I think I saw that sixty percent of these funds are coming from the state. The other forty percent, I assume would be in fourth and district?
Yes.
Out of what budget does that come from?
That would, that, that is a great question. I think because it hasn't improved yet, I don't know the specifics, but maybe, um, Dr. Prestary can address that.
From what I understand from the committee, uh, we already offer extra pay, extra duty for mentors. And so this will mean that there's, uh, we're only paying forty percent of what we had mandated to spend, which allows us to add extra funds to spend elsewhere.
So it sounds like we're going to stop paying them and and extra pay, a, extra duty, start paying through this?
So instead of paying out of our pocket, we're only paying forty percent out of our pocket and sixty percent, uh, sixty percent of that, uh, will be reimbursed from the state. So.
But there will be a lot of teachers from the district who don't qualify for this program. So we'll continue to have those who don't qualify for this program to be paid separately.
Uh, there's, we've had many different positions for extra pay, extra duty over the years.
Uh-huh.
Um, we're continuing to evaluate ways to make sure that we're, our procedures are, uh, aligned and updated. Um, not every extra pay, extra duty falls under this category. So there's still some that we anticipate we continue.
That's great. One, one last question. Um, this was in place a few years ago or?
So the, this, I think the grant expired on the state level.
Yes.
And then the legislators just repassed legislation to fund this.
We have had this.
We have done this in the past and I can't remember the exact year, Miss, Miss Williams, do you? Um, yeah, cause I know that two of the people on our committee actually were teachers who participated in it and they spoke very highly of it. So Miss Pamela Hollins and Miss Tiffany McConnell were both very involved in it as teachers, talked about how it helped their career. And so they were passionate about being on this committee to try to bring it back.
Okay. That was, that was my question. What was the feedback from before? Have, did we have a positive experience with?
Yeah. Uh, and I think to my knowledge, and I can check and get back to you. I think this was many years ago was the last time, um, that we've done this. This is, this is not like the recent past. It, it goes, I mean, I think it's been ten years or more since this program has been active at Normandy. So it, it's been a while. Right. So, yeah.
Okay. So I've got one last, last question. When it's implemented, will it be retroactive? Well, if we started this in November first, will we have an opportunity for teachers to say, last month I did two hundred hours, can they get credit for?
No. No. It will be, they have to apply. We have to have their name and they have to actually have their, their hours, kind of what they're doing approved by somebody before we were just gonna say, oh, yeah, so. Um, going for it. And teachers will know that before they sign up if they choose to, if it's all approved.
Great. Thank you.
Andrew, thank you for being here tonight. And in her absence, I'd also like to thank Dr. McConnell for her work with regard to making sure that we're allowed to participate in this program. Well, just a quick question, uh, will there be a way for us to document, uh, teachers that have participated and also document the impact of their, uh, work with regard to this program?
So clarifying, what, so you mean like in the past is there way or like going forward?
Going forward. Yeah.
So that's actually, so that's what we're, we're trying to do. This is weekend, we absolutely will have every hour documented, documented, every name. So you guys will see any teacher who, who participates, we will actually get you say like, this teacher Jane Doe did twenty hours tutoring, did ten hours like that. And you guys can look at it. We are trying as a committee to decide what metrics we can put in place to measure actual student academic outcomes. Um, when we submitted our application to the state, that was nowhere, um, that was listed kind of as like our, Desi gave us a recommended application to turn in and that was not included, but actually we went the extra mile to try to figure something out. So we haven't nailed that down specifically yet, but we definitely discussed what metrics can we do to see how this affects students academically? We talked about various pre-tests. We talked about pulling our benchmark scores and looking at them. And I think when our committee gets back together, we'll, we'll try to put something in place like how can we measure the student impact to share with the board? Cause that is something that I think is important. Yep, absolutely.
Yep. Um, so I think I just want a bit of clarity on, um, the budget and the allocation on the budget line item, extra pay, extra duty. That's a budget line item that we have already. And we're utilizing that to compensate teachers for extra work, right? So it sounds like as a follow on to Mr. Hodges' question is that we're basically getting a source to support something we're doing already.
Absolutely. All sets what would be out of our pocket and we actually get reimbursed for it.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Um, two, uh, just to follow on to the, um, measurable outcomes. So we applied for a grant and we, did we state anything that we're trying to measure in terms of improvement, uh, for our students?
So we didn't because the state grant did not include that. Um, but yeah, so they didn't ask for it. And so our committee, we, we met for a long time, really going line by line. What does Normandy want to make this plan better?
Okay.
Um, and so I, it's, it's a fairly complex metric to, to measure, but we're gonna try to do it, but we didn't actually put it as part of the grant.
I understand. What's the timeline for determining that, given we're trying to measure so many things to improve our performance towards an end goal?
Yeah. So because this is our first year coming back, we, we would have, in the future, we submitted the plan on time, which was September thirtieth. If we do the, this year, we're hoping next year to be way further ahead and have teachers signing up basically in August when they come back as opposed to now. Because it rushes them getting their hours. It rushes us putting things in place like best ways to measure.
Hmm.
So our committee, we, we were hoping to meet early this week. Um, but we have to reach out to every teacher in the district to let them know that this has been board approved. We have to teach them about how this would work and we have to get people on board. And so during that process and when we meet, we hope to have by then submitting some sort of pre-test, post-test, something, whether it's, you know, behavior, academics, attendance, all three of those things could be affected by kids getting this extra support. And so we just need to nail something down. And so when we do, I know Miss, Miss Williams is on the board. We, we will share it out with you. Here's how we think is the most effective way to measure the impact on students. Uh, once we do, we'll, we'll let you know. And then in May, you know, we can come back and say, here's what we thought. Here's how we are attempting to measure this.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Yep.
Dr. Ryder, I think you wanted to add something.
Yes, I just had a clarifying question. You had said teachers that are distinguished can participate or proficient?
So it is not, um, it depends on the stage level and the, the specific plan is, I think, included in your guys' stuff where you can see like, um, the whole document. At stage level one, they only need to be proficient. At stage level two and stage level three, they need to be, um, not just, what's the one under distinguished spacing that? No, emerging's the lowest developing. Yeah. Okay. Yes. I'm sorry. They do need to be proficient or higher. Thank you. I'm sorry. So yes, so for stage level one, they just need to be developing. For stage level two and three, they need to be proficient or higher. So in our top two. Thank you. Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Yep.
All right. So what's the, this is item for action. Uh, we're taking action to proceed with, what's the action that we, your pleasure of the board?
We can do that tonight or, or, and we can set for next time either way.
Okay. So is, what's your pleasure of me? Is this for information or what do you?
I'd love to approve it if there's enough information.
Frame the, frame, frame what you're trying to get us to approve.
Um.
Approve the plan.
Approve the plan? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the plan as presented.
So moved.
Second? Any more discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same privilege. The ayes have it. Thank you. All right. So moving on to the next item, um, eight point zero two, camera, microphone and intercom systems for East Hall.
Good evening, Board President.
Good evening, everyone. So S N I T. We're seeking for board approval for East Hall audio enhancement.
Okay.
So the audio enhancement for East Hall, uh, district-wide safety communication cameras in the classroom and intercom. So this will help us with, again, with, uh, safety, sharpen and make more effective intercom and communication among classrooms and offices. Allow students learning elsewhere and ability to see and hear clearly teachers' lessons. Provide, uh, critical padding button for teachers to use to alert authorities in event of immediate danger. So the teachers will have that, uh, special in your, and so well as cameras in the classroom for safety of students and teachers. So the proposal that we received for our, our audio enhancement team, uh, from the previous years, we know that, uh, board approved for the project for million dollar project. Uh, so this is the continuation of it for our new building at high school for East Hall. We have a, a current project status, uh, on that paper. You can see it. We have a, a current project status uh on that paper, you can see it. So each school, it's listed over there, it's like a Barack Obama, Bell nor early learning, Jefferson, Lucas Crossing and Washington. Um, actually, here, we can see that um Norman High School is right now in 60% completed. The work at audio enhancement equipments, uh, north and east needs to be ordered. Uh, Washington School is 100% done, uh, but just need professional uh training. Obama at 80%, Bell nor at 80%, Lucas Learning because uh, and early learning because they need a professional development and NVRs for the classrooms. So, so we get proposal for the future scope of work and quotes. So we are adding 37 new classrooms at the East Hall. Uh, so, so this will be at another um spending or cost, extras cost, we can say that. East Hall will add 37 additional rooms in a, at high school that were not accounted in the uh prior uh audio enhancement systems. So what will it, will be included classroom audio, uh, intercom, bells, paging, safe and view back. So this will give teachers and students uh ability to like a BS safe. So we have a couple of like two options and we, we talked with the director of security and Dr. Uh Phil about uh which options we will go and we kind of choose the option ones because we want all schools be in the same uh level. So kind of adding audio enhancement system, uh panic buttons and plus uh cameras in the classrooms. Again, these cameras uh recording 24/7, but it will need permission from director of security to uh each school administration to reach that uh footages. Uh, kind of trying to keep uh secure under the bar. So the cost uh that we, it's going to be approximately around uh 298,565 thousand dollars. And we are looking for approval and we know that it's not like an immediate, but with this inflation and finding the equipments, we kind of want to go ahead. And uh if it's approved, we wanna kind of start uh ordering that equipment and work with the audio enhancement company. Uh, because they said to us that it's taking like a three, four months to get all equipments now. Um, so kind of we want to make sure that you know when the construction is going to over and we wanna finish everything in the same time. Any questions?
Any questions, Ms. Miller? The shield, Williams?
Yeah, I see the difference in option one and option two is the okay.
Oh, okay, uh, let me show again. The difference between them, it was the cameras, okay? Uh, they give us the option.
Now, what does no view path and view path mean?
Yeah, the view path, it's kind of uh, the security cameras in the classroom, it's this, uh, if you're seeing on, if you're looking on your screen right now, you can see that plus it says camera. So this, this is the object, kind of is giving the option to see what's going on in the classroom.
And that's the view path?
Yeah.
But we won't be able to see what's in the classroom without it.
Yes, and for that, the second option is without camera. If you pay attention now to the screen, it's no cameras. Because we kind of look for the, how can we uh bring the price cost down? We work with them, it's, it's actually the third one, kind of it, we go back and forth, back and forth, kind of we say that, can you please bring it down, bring it down? And then I said that which kind of options you, what kind of options you have, they say that if you want, you don't have to put the cameras, but I say, no. So just in case I want to bring that both options to you so you can see, uh, the price difference is just uh around like uh 70,000, I can say.
Okay. Cost. Uh, and what is the NVR?
NVR, the equipment that where you're recording that footage, just video.
Okay, so does complete mean installed or operational?
Yes, uh, so. Yes, it's scope service include says installation of the classroom systems, i- installation of intercom system, installations of hallway speakers, installation of exterior speakers, communication and test all system, freight and delivery cost, everything is included on that price.
I meant on the others, not this one. I mean, uh, the other school said complete.
Oh, that things is uh.
Yeah, when it says complete, does it mean everything's been installed that you may have listed here? Or does it mean that they can actually use the system?
Yeah, but this one was sent by them. Then we say that, no, it's not. So for that, I have, I showed you that uh here. The Jarvis is our engineer, uh, so he puts today this thing for me and you can see right now on your screen. And I read it from here. Already we shared this information and we're working with the company, however, they put 100%, we not agree.
Okay.
Say that you have to fix and give us the 100% because I did not accept yet work. They can say 100% because I'm checking and taking, we already working with some school or, for example, Obama, we know that it's recording and everything, but NVR is not working. So they didn't share that information or they were shared, but it's lost or something like that. We're trying to put everything is 100% working, then we will accept that all work.
Okay, and do you have a timeframe for these other schools, not this one particular East Hall?
Yeah, I forget. So right now, uh, i- if you paid, uh, if you pay attention already, it says PD. Uh, right now, we sent two of our Jarvis and then to Utah for audio enhancement, enhancement training. Because the Terry and Nick, they are not here, so who was training it? So we sending them for two-week uh training. So with all that installations, PD. And then uh after two weeks, we sending Sharida to another uh uh workshop. So she will get trained for giving PD to uh school administration and teachers.
Okay. Do you have a timeframe?
Uh, yes.
When that will be completed, will it be 100%?
The, other than high school, I hope it will finish, uh, we wanna finish by uh end of November, uh, end of November.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Can finish.
Will this, is this equipment uh uniform across the district? So we've already, is this the same equipment that's in the elementary, elementary school is the same equipment that we're talking about?
Yes, yes, so this, this is, this will be the same equipment. Uh, for that, I say that we wanna keep everything same because it's already we implemented the cameras in other schools too.
Right.
Uh, it was implemented 182 uh system in the schools, classrooms and all around the district. So we want to keep the same.
And it is, it is all um.
Audio enhancement. Yes, it will be integrated.
We can access all of the information across the district, is that right?
Yes, uh, so how the system works, each school have their own accesses. Uh, also, uh, director of security will be, they connect, uh, it will be connected to the one system where he can pull that footages if he wants.
Great. Now I've got another question. Is this equipment at all integrated with the existing learning equipment that exists inside of the classroom? Is there any way to leverage this equipment to benefit any kind of um distant learning or online learning modules that we have?
Uh, yes, uh, for online learning, it will help with the uh that, uh, because it will give, uh, in the special disable the sound system. So when we using the zoom or the, any kind of the online methods to, so it will help them to hear better or online. Other than that, it's uh, no, it's just for security purposes, the cameras. You can't use that cameras for the zoom or something else.
So I, are you saying that the audio can be used for distant, uh, distance learning?
Uh, it will help much better to hear because that sound system, uh, teachers, they don't have to scream, so mics, it's already on.
So we'll be able to integrate the teacher's microphone into.
General system.
In the room, the general system in the room. Okay, great.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. You asked all the questions that I was anticipating to ask. Thank you very much.
I'm serious. All right, um, I think the only question I roll out of the, the training. Uh, so the training that our staff is taking, they'll be able to um execute on the training and professional development of the equipment. But also we'll be able to, what about ongoing maintenance and, you know?
So uh, PD, uh, PD actually was already given in summertime by Ms. Jill before she leave to the uh, Jeff, uh, Lucas Crossing. But uh, as you know, that all my team is new, so we kind of starting from everything from the beginning.
Hmm.
Uh, yes, it will be ongoing training for that. We send our two IT team guys so to Utah. And we're going to send also to Orlando too, so they can learn and continuously help with fixing, uh, installing and teaching and for PD.
Okay.
For the future.
All right.
So we trying to make sure that we have trained peoples in our team.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, uh, I want to entertain a motion to uh approve the system as presented.
I've got, I've got one more question here.
Yes, sir.
This is an unbudgeted expense, right? Doctor, who's it here?
How, how are we gonna pay for this?
We are fortunate to be doing construction in time of uh Esser, uh, President Biden's coronavirus relief funds. And so while it's getting closer to us reaching um expenses approaching the amount of sources, we still have that money uh available that we have budgeted to spend, even with change orders. So we're able to cover that uh through uh money that's been allocated for capital expenses. Uh, and including Esser funds that go to uh building envelope and safety and security and construction. That's already been approved by Desi. This one hasn't, but we uh just a couple of weeks ago approved capital uh, capital revenue through the tax rate. And that takes care of it. There's many sources of funds that'll cover this uh 300,000 or 270,000.
And because we have not, uh, we didn't have any insight to predict this, this expense, we haven't uh sent this out for bids. So we're gonna use the same provider that we had. So this hasn't been bid out.
We, we have a sole source letter from the board approval from a year ago for this vendor and going to a different vendor for this type of product would defeat purpose.
Okay.
Of its effectiveness.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so if you pay attention to your screen, this is the, from the board meeting agenda from one year, exactly one year.
We got you, sir. We got you.
Sorry.
It's all good, it's all good.
Okay.
All right, uh, any other questions before we go into the question? What's that?
I'm going with option one.
A T? Oh, sorry. So option.
We are asking for option one.
Option. All right.
With cameras.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, um, so with that, entertain a motion uh as presented with option one. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Move, can I get a second?
Second.
It's been moving properly seconded. Um, any other question? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same privilege. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate.
The ayes have it. I was asking, can we get, can we, you know, do something about our order number, you know, technology? Can you add that to the list too? Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, so was that it? All right, oh, one more item for action. ESS eight point oh three.
Okay, um, so I know there's been discussion about our best approach to solve um a struggle we've had, been having, which is finding enough qualified substitute teachers. So after doing research, um, we feel good about ESS. And so we actually brought an ESS representative. She's gonna give a brief presentation. And then I am here to answer questions along with uh Ms. Ann Gallagher. So Ms. Ann, you wanna come on down and?
Thanks. Um, thank you um for allowing me to be here tonight. Appreciate it. Um, my name's Ann Gallagher. I'm the director of business development for ESS. I'm um responsible for the Midwest region, which includes Missouri, Kansas, Iowa, Nebraska, but I reside here in St. Louis. So that really worked out well. So again, thank you for inviting me to be here today. Um, as you can see, uh, it would be ESS as an education solution services company supporting only education as a vertical market. As opposed to, I'm not gonna name, name other um third-party uh services like this. Um, we only focus on, on uh education and that vertical market and are really proud of that for the past 25 years. We support over, um, let's see how this one works.
Scroll down.
Okay. Maybe, thanks. I'm not sure how to use this computer.
There you go.
Thanks. Yeah, so here we are with the United States. So we're in over 35 um states in the nation, um, over 900 districts and 4.5 million students that we're serving. And at the end of the day, that's ultimately our goal and your goal is to support the success and achievement of the students. So um, uh, like I said, we've been uh very experienced. Uh, we've been uh very, very successful actually in this area. We recently worked with Ferguson, they decided to uh bring it in-house for uh, for reasons that they were able to feel confident in their ability to, to be able to maintain. We'll see, we left on very good, good terms. River View is right here as well. We're um, we're very, very uh focused and we have two full-time staff people that reside here. So we look at, at our relationship as a partnership and not just from um, uh, a national corporate uh support, but also regional and local. So that's why we're able to provide to you two uh sta- staffing people that not, they reside here, they're already here, they're already recruiting. And you'd be sharing those resources, which is really exciting. So I'm very, very, oh yeah, here we go. I see how it works now. So that's the whole, the goal. So the ESS goals are the same hopefully as your, as your, uh, your goals for the district. So larger, more engaged pool, right? So we wanna, ultimately wanna increase the fill rates. Um, they, the uh, the recruiting that we do is to get people from the community, they would actually be employed by ESS. And it's, it's a corporation. So it's, it's a company that they would feel like our job is to make sure that they feel like they're a part of a company that cares about them. And I've heard, uh, there's a couple of words, I, I jotted down while you were talking about other things. Accountability, right? So um, if we were so uh fortunate to, to be able to, to work and partner with the district. Um, accountability is really important to us. So and measurability, right? So the software program, so frontline is a software um absence management program that comes with um the services that we provide. There's no additional costs. And so with that, you're being able to, you're accountable. So we can see the fill rates, there's a dashboard. We can work with you, especially this is all new, right? So being able to work with um the local staff, being able to give reporting back to the district, to the, to the board. So you can see what, what are we getting for our return, right? And so you can see and follow and measure the um, the fill rates and the quantity and then reach, ultimately reach those goals. How are we doing that? And then being able to resolve any type of gaps that we might, might see. So measurability is really, really important and something that would come along with that. And then of course, like I said before, being a, an employee of ESS, it's making sure that, you know, they are incented. So we do lots of raffles and like I saw something come across my desk about pumpkin carving contests and that's just throughout the nation. So little things like that. And then also incenting people like to come to the district, you know, after like, you know, five, five times or 10 times and being able to, and that's, that comes from ESS. We'd be giving them a bonus of $100 or $200, whatever that is that we decide on. And it's again, it's trying to make them feel like they're a part of something bigger that they can be, they can grow with. And that we want to continue to keep them with ESS and keep them essentially with the district. When I was talking about the absence management software program, it's really cool too. Because once the district and this, the talented pool of substitutes that, that we would provide, you know, their credential, we do background checks and then it's essentially coming from the community, right? So, you know, you might, you might see like repeat teachers wanting to have those repeat people coming back in because they're, now they're becoming, you know, associated with the students, right? And that's, that's very successful for students. They want to be able to kind of recognize and have a relationship with, with not only the teacher, but now the substitute. So there's an ability then within the software that a teacher can request people that they find that are, you know, are accountable, right? We'll go back to that word again. So when we're talking about, you know, if we are so successful, you know, with working with you, what it would look like is technically a timeline of four weeks. So we're already kind of in the first week if, if, you know, as an example. So I've already worked with, and one of our first Zoom calls, we had my operator. So I'm local. I have a regional support, my operator Becky Sapples, who, who I've worked very closely with. She would be main, she would be the VP of Operations for my Midwest territory. So she would actually own and be responsible for the first transition call. So that would be with her finance team, HR, IT folks. And that would be to kind of talk about what are the guidelines, what are your goals that you're trying to achieve? We would provide a template of a formatted letter that you could send out to your current substitutes. Because ideally we'd like to transition them, but we have to invite them, right? So being able to, you would all have to send that letter out first and invite them to, you know, the idea of working for ESS and we would provide that, that information, that collateral for you. And then, then we would do a kickoff and then we would provide our own email, you know, to your substitutes to hopefully invite them to be a part of the ESS company. And we do a lot of social media, advertising, indeed recruiting, and that's all built in. Now, all of that, the marketing, everything that we do is built into the, the markup that we've provided to you, your proposal. So this is essentially the timeline and what needs to occur. Becky would be responsible for this timeline and maintaining that we're going to do exactly what we say we're going to do. And that's what I have without taking much more of your time. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
And yeah, just, I know you guys might have some questions. So just some clarity and I think we should, we, we did speak with five other different companies and tried to really engage and see what would be the best for Normandy. And so one thing that I think was really exciting about ESS is that we've had struggles where we can't find as many subs, if the subs we find don't get enough training because we don't have always a support or ESS specifically trained subs before sending them. In addition, we did call and check references to hear from other districts about different companies. And we felt confident after making calls and looking at the financials of everything else with ESS. So those other caveats, you know, I'm happy to try to explain why Dr. Brooks, why Dr. Ryder feel confident. But there are, you know, a few, you need other things too. We can always come back to the table later. But yeah, do you have any questions for either Anne or myself? Sure, Mr. Neil?
What other district did you say you were in St. Louis? You mentioned River View.
Yes, I did. Lincoln County as well. To mention a few, let's see. Yeah, it was River View Gardens, Ferguson. We just, you know, we just left, but that was amicable. We have a sister company called Proximity Learning. You may or may not have heard of that. Okay, yeah, so. Oh, right. I think you have an agreement with that. Yeah, so that is a virtual company. So essentially the same type of support, but it's all virtual. And so we were already, I think, working, yeah.
And ESS's main presence up to this point has been on the East Coast. And so they've been very successful there as we researched the company and try to understand why this would be a good fit for us. And so it's, they're not new. They, they've been in this, in this business for a long time. And as just looking at, you know, as they're coming to St. Louis, hopefully we're getting some benefits as well because they're, they're new. And we've gotten a really, I think, fair and, and great price compared to the other companies that we were investigating.
Just, and I, I'll just be honest and, and say that I'm new to ESS. I came from Steelcase, 17-year veteran of a global office furniture organization and I loved my job. It was great. But the hybrid, you know, working from home really wasn't helping me. So I sought, I went out and, and looked at different organizations and I wanted to look at something that was a little more software or IT related because it's not going anywhere. But where there was a demand and a need, there's a huge demand and a huge need. I feel very fortunate to be with ESS now with what's going on in the nation. It's on the news every day, every, in the newspapers, period. Any, anyplace you go, it's a topic of any dinner conversation, right? So anyway, I, I wanted to come with ESS because I want to be a part of something where put my stake in the ground. I've always been in sales, but from a design perspective, but that they had the resources. Cause I can only, you know, I have to believe in what I'm doing and they have to have the resources. They're going to support what I'm going to do. And I'm here local and they say what they're going to do and they do it. They walk the talk. It's very impressive.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Thank you so much for being with us tonight, Anne. This is a great presentation. You've mentioned that one of your goals was to increase fill rates. What have you seen with Ferguson and River View as a, as a business?
Yeah, so we were well into the eighties, 80% fill rates, which is pretty successful, especially coming out of the pandemic, which, you know, we all suffered, you know, with, with that and with the labor shortages. So we're feeling very, very confident in even increasing those fill rates. And as far as our hiring and recruiting, it is, I mean, they go above and beyond to get those fill rates up. And it's all about the recruiting and going out in social media. They actually will go and create job fairs. And we actually work, like I'll give you an example of here at UMSL. We want to go out into the community as well and work with those future teachers, right? So we'll work with the, the local colleges, universities like an UMSL and be able to, when they are, when we have employed a future teacher, they get a credit for, for their work. But they also get paid by, you know, working with us as well. So, you know, again, that's just trying to show that, that what level of, you know, commitment we're trying to make to not just the district, but to the community as well.
Alright, so my question is, is this going to cost us more or is it going to cost our substitutes more? Alright, so who's, who's taking the cost for this?
Okay, so that, that is a great question. So right now we are currently working with Kelly. And one thing, just to make sure that, that we're clear and something I should have mentioned is if we decide to sign a contract with ESS, they will be our sole provider of substitute teachers. So we will no longer be able to contract with Kelly Services and with the other organizations. Currently we get two to three subs a day from Kelly, not nearly what we are asking for. We actually spoke at the HR meeting in the area and lots of people are struggling with Kelly, but specifically the urban districts. Kelly charges considerably more than ESS. I think it was in documents, I, I can't remember exactly how much, but I think that they, on top of our rate, so ESS will pay teachers what we decide and then ESS will, will have a markup of 28%. I believe Kelly's is 35, 36%. It's in there and I can get these specific numbers later. So they actually would be saving us money for the subs that come. And the subs who work would be getting like the same pay. So the district would be paying more than if they were just a regular Normandy employee, but less for when we actually pay out Kelly for the few subs that do come. I don't, yeah. Does that, does that answer your question?
It does. I'd love to see those numbers. I didn't see them before.
Okay, yeah, I can, absolutely. I've got a document with all the companies I can reshare too.
Great. And this will not deter any of our consistent subs, right?
So currently, and the plan is, is that we have long-term subs who are filling in classrooms. We currently have 22 open positions until each one that we're trying to actively fill. And we have long-term subs in place in those buildings. They are, they actually receive a salary and benefits from Normandy. It is not on the teacher's scale, but it's one way that we retain long-term subs. They will stay being Normandy employees. They will have their contract. They will be the same way. It is the day-to-day subs that we are looking help with. So like if a teacher is sick and calls off, you know, currently it's very difficult to find people. Kelly's not sending people, people are, I mean, I've, I've stepped in classrooms, people from central office are, are going because we really want to support instructional leads. Everybody's helping out. So we're hoping that ESS, you know, they'll be able to see the absence management. Oh, this third grade position is now open and ESS, ESS employee will slide in and take it as opposed to like a Kelly service employee.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. Dr. Petty?
Andrew, I would like to thank you for your responsiveness and also Dr. Brooks. In his absence, I raised a lot of these questions prior to the meeting. And it is with a great deal of thanks and gratitude that you reached out and you responded. You did share the information and I thank you very much and I appreciate that. And we thank you for being here with us tonight. And as with any new partnership, there are going to be some glitches and we're hoping that we'll continue to see you here with us.
Absolutely.
As we work.
I give you my word on that.
Those glitches. And I want to just say that our goal is to put a qualified teacher
That's right.
in every classroom, in front of every child that the Normandy Schools collaborative serves. And so we will really be looking forward to seeing ESS's capacity
Yep.
for meeting and filling that need. Because the need is great. We have one of our principals here tonight. Dr. Taylor is with us. And we are specifically concerned about making sure that those classrooms are covered at her classroom. That's the beginning of where our work starts is to make sure that she has an able-bodied, highly qualified teacher in every classroom. So thank you both.
Excellent.
And thank you to Dr. Brooks in his absence. I appreciate his support.
Thank you, Dr. Petty. I echo Dr. Petty's sentiments. Andrew, thank you for your hard work and proactiveness and being solution-oriented. This sounds like a pretty good program. Couple of questions I have to curb my enthusiasm. I think the question that Dr., I mean, that Mr. Hodge asked, what does this cost, cost us? And basically what I'm hearing is that it's, it's, I see, Dr. Lucetary, what does this cost us?
This, we paid for this through unfilled teaching position. We ran a calculation. We, we spend more if it's a certified teacher who's a salary person. We spend less if that's filled by a sub. So it doesn't cost us anything out of the budget. We just reallocate money that we would have spent if that were filled by a teacher. And we pay a little bit less to have these subs.
So the money's already in the budget, programmed in the budget, we're just shifting vendors?
Yes.
Okay, that's one. Two, whenever we as a district, a public entity, when the word sole source comes up, there's an issue of procurement. Have we dealt with procurement?
So I don't think I fully understand the question.
So as you want to help him, Dr.?
So like ESS will be our only provider. So are you going?
Well, I think what I hear, what President Roberts bringing up is you had mentioned that you had contacted a number of firms. You had evaluated their prices. You had evaluated their services and you have it in a document. And that, that document is the procurement space. But we, I understand maybe, I think you shared it with Dr. Petty?
Yes.
Just one habit would be to try to run that past me before it gets to me. I know this is one of those things where we needed, we needed this right away. That's something that's, that's the process.
Sure. And, and it sounds like, you know, I'm just a little leery when I see, not leery, but I'm measured when I see sole source documents, right? And as, as a public agency, but it sounds like we already have a affiliate vendor that's already doing work for us. So, okay, so that, that's helpful. But just to make sure that we, you know, you present to us that, okay, you've gone through this process to identify and select the vendor that we're intending to sole source. Also, I think it'd be helpful that some sort of charter, something that helps us to understand the economic impact. Because I, and I think this is, to unpack my question a little bit, why are we as a district moving forward with substitutes that are not employed by the district versus an agency? That was a question that came up and I think that's a valid question. Why are we going this route?
So we, the reason why is it's very difficult to recruit in this environment. We are, we are putting it out everywhere. We're paying for Facebook ads. We have posted it. We are just not getting enough qualified applicants. When we get applicants, we call them, they're not certified appropriately. In addition, you know, when we do hire subs, you know, we haven't had the time in our small department to give them training, to support them. We think that this will be worth it. In addition, because ESS helps manage the placement of subs, it will decrease the burden of human resources of every day, trying to shift people around and, and whatnot. But currently the biggest issue is just recruitment. We're trying. It's very difficult. We're even talking about sending postcards like we did for bus drivers out throughout. And we think that in the end, this will just be much better for students because we'll actually be able to find people, which is a struggle now.
Sure, let me say that a different way. So our small department, it's overwhelming so that we want to have a strategic partner that can help us augment our services so that we can get what we need.
Exactly.
Alright. Thanks. Alright. Anything, so are we, are we taking an action on something to, what, what?
We would, we would love for you to approve the contract. I know it, it was sent last, I think by Dr. Brooks, but then we re-uploaded it. And, and if you need more time, but there is a contract that is also attached. We would love for you to approve the contract. That way we can get rolling and we can start getting subs in classes. Because we know that they have qualified subs. It's going to take them, like, like Anne said, up to three weeks to start getting people filled in. So the sooner that we can approve this contract, the better for us. That way we can hit the ground.
Has our legal reviewed this?
I need to talk to Dr. Brooks to for sure say one way or not. I believe they have, but I, I don't want to, I don't feel comfortable saying yes without reaching out to him.
Okay, I understand. I think that one, as the board, we consider this as a motion. One, we can approve it, continue to point legal review. And is, is there anything else that, any other contingency?
I just want to say that when you talk about sole source vendor, you kind of underscored the point I was trying to make. And I want to make sure that it's clear that ESS is aware of the number of vacancies that we have on a regular and consistent basis. And they have the capacity and the capability to fill those vacancies. Because that's what will make the sole source vendor problematic. We, we want to deal with multiple vendors if that's what's required to fill the vacancies. And so I just want to be clear.
Interesting.
You understand that we have these vacancies and that's why I referenced the principal who's here tonight. You know, she's probably going to have on Friday, you know, 12 vacancies. And so we need to make sure that if you're the sole source vendor, you can fill all of those vacancies.
Absolutely. It's when we're focused and have the ability that we're not competing with other talent or other pools. It's, it's just more cumbersome. And we found that this is a more successful model. When we're, we're invested, we're focused to get the best and the fill rates up.
Okay. I think, so as presented, I think just adding the conditions precedence.
Legal has reviewed, by the way.
They have?
They have, and they've confirmed it's all good.
Okay. Well, good. Then I think the only thing, I, I think this is just really for you to put the comparative analysis together of the, you know, why we got here based on the other vendors that we had. But that's, that's not going to impact this. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to. But that's, that's not gonna impact this. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to uh.
Yeah.
What is the term of the contract?
It's one year. You can make it more if you want. But it's, it's a, it's a one-year.
All right, so um, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented. Second. Got him, uh, it's been moving properly seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor, I, uh, oppose, same privilege. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm very excited. Thank you.
So I think that is the item for action. Uh, moving on to item number nine, uh, board comments. Mr. Neil.
Yes, good to be back with everyone. Uh, I continue to be excited and. While all is taking place here in Normandy, it's, it's um great to see the growth of the programs. Everything, energy is up. And um just really happy to see that, especially for our employees. So keep up the work. And uh, I continue to support you as you wait to hand. I did have one. Thank you.
Ms. Wade, Wade?
I just wanna say um, I enjoyed visiting schools the last few days and uh. Uh, this particular contract certainly is needed. Uh, that is one of the critical factors. We just don't know what to do when you don't have enough personnel. And you got a school full of children. So um, E S S, you've got a job here. All right. Okay, all right. But I thank all of the folks in these schools who are working so very hard. I know you're tired and sometimes you're very frustrated, but you're giving your best to our children and I thank you for it.
Thank you, Ms. Hodge.
Thank you. Um, I echo all of the comments that have been said. I also want to acknowledge that Principal Gully is here. From Lucas Crossing, um, had an opportunity to attend their state of the school um event. I forget the name of the title, but I was hoping that you were gonna share uh with us about that event. Uh, but for the sake of time, I will let you all know that I had the privilege, uh, I think it was on Thursday of last week. Uh, they invited all of the parents and students in to here, meet teachers, to have conversation. But ultimately, uh, to share the state of the school. Honest and brutal information by the numbers about where our students are academically. They painted a beautiful picture of where we are and where we need to go and invited everybody in the community to be a part of it. Uh, it is humbling to see where our students are, but it is also very optimistic. Uh, to know that we've got leaders who are up for the challenge. So hats off uh to the team at Lucas Crossing. And I will also let you know that um that night, we stood and we talked all night. About what we could do to bring resources to help improve reading scores. And we called Julius Anthony about eight or nine o'clock. And he answered the call and we said we need another one. We need another Believe project here in the district. And he is actively working with us right now to get the number eight, uh, the Believe Eight at Lucas Crossing. So hats off uh to our leadership and the work that they're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge, Dr. Petty.
Uh, good evening. I, I again want to uh just kinda reach out and uh. Thank Dr. Makia Douglas in her absence. I recently had the opportunity to attend a principal's meeting. And to see the collaboration and the cooperation that's taking place among the principals. And to see the data that guides what principals are doing and how they lead school buildings towards excellence. So it's great to know that we have leadership in our buildings. Uh, under the, the leadership of our assistant superintendent, Dr. Douglas. It was a pleasure to be a part of that meeting and see what's happening. In particular, I'd like to uh just recognize Principal West. For the clarity with which, within which he presented what's taking place at Bell Nor. He has come in as a new principal. And he's doing an extremely great job over there. Um, again, tonight, I want to thank uh Dr. Tony Brooks and uh Andrew Miller. For really putting together what I believe is the type of presentation that this board has been asking for. Uh, in particular, I want to thank Andrew for the pre-work that happened prior to the board meeting. To make this presentation go smooth, so that we can engage into a partnership with E S S and Anne Gallagher. That I believe will indeed be fruitful. Um, to that end, I also want to thank Zach and I T. Uh, for being here tonight. Uh, as we have noted, Mr. President, I saw you note, he was very well prepared for questions. And we appreciate when our staff comes and they are not defensive and insecure. But they are able to answer the questions that will be asked of us as board members. So Zach, it is duly noted that you were prepared tonight and thank you for being here. Uh, finally, uh, I just want to just recognize two more people. Um, the job of security. Is parallel with the job of law enforcement. And law enforcement is not always popular in our community. But I think we all need to rally around Mr. Campbell and support his efforts to keep our campuses. Uh, our schools, our students and our staff safe. And just the fact that he was willing to be here. And stand and take responsibility for that is something that I owe a debt of gratitude to him. And all of the security team and the partnership with North County Collaborative. Um, and finally, and uh I will uh be briefing my remarks and wrap it up. I think that it is imperative uh that we thank Superintendent Crystal Ryder for pointing out the positive. Uh, some of what she pointed out tonight, I got a chance to feel good early in my week. I started my week off with a happy Monday because of some of the positive things that Dr. Ryder was able to share. With regard to what's happening in the high school. While I am one who fully intends to hold folks accountable, I do believe that we need to recognize when things are working. And when good things are happening. So I want to thank Dr. Ryder as well. Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to time that those remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Petty, and thank you to my fellow esteemed board members. Um, I am honored and humbled that I'm able to serve with uh board members that have really been rolling up their sleeves. And just demonstrating dedication and commitment to trying to improve our district. Um, that is no small task and um I'm very appreciative of that. I want to say thank you to uh interim superintendent, Dr. Ryder and her cabinet. Um, this is nothing less than a beautiful struggle and we appreciate all your efforts and what you're doing. The, when we started out this year, uh, we honored Dr. Taylor, Nitro Taylor, with flowers. And it was symbolic of giving people their flowers while they're here. And I think, I believe, I've observed that Dr. Taylor has risen to the occasion. To not only embrace that, but give flowers to our students while they're here, while they're present. And inspire them as we saw today. So thank you, Dr. Nitro Taylor, and thank you to the other members of uh. Our teachers and our principals and our staff that are doing that. But that's inspiring and please keep that up, because we need that. And lastly, this is homecoming week. Let's have, uh, let's be safe. Let's be secure. Mr. Campbell, um, but let's also enjoy and embrace Viking pride. Um, this is an opportunity for us to, you know, continue to reinvigorate ourselves. Um, and demonstrate to the world what Viking pride means. And we embrace our alumni. We welcome our alumni. And we have some phenomenal and outstanding alumni evidenced by the Believe Project. Um, you know, that are prepared and willing to come back and to give back. We have to embrace them. If we don't, then shame on us. That's the last time I'll say that. So let's enjoy homecoming week. Let's enjoy one another. Let's be safe and um I appreciate you all. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to move to executive session.
So move.
Give me a second. All in favor uh by roll call vote, Ms. Barnett? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, thank you. All right, so we'll, we'll take a uh.